Are you ready? Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us today. I'd like to introduce myself. I am Rosa Guevara Costa, your city clerk. And tonight, we will have Margie Gater from the League of Women Voters. Louder, sorry. The mic was off, sorry. That can't hear. So Margie Gater tonight will be the moderator for the event. You have up here, we have candidates from District One. We have Angelique Presidente. And then we have Marc Adiego from District One. And we have candidates from District Five, Brittany Burgow, Tom Carney, and Eddie Flores. And this will be your opportunity to ask questions. We have, what's her name?
Oh, I'll do that.
You'll do that, okay. So I'll hand it over to Margie.
All right, good evening and welcome. How's that for sound level? Okay. Good evening and welcome. First, some announcements. Let's pull out those cell phones if you haven't already and make sure they're off or on silent, please, so that the candidates are not interrupted when they speak. To keep a neutral and fair atmosphere and focus on issues, the candidates have agreed to our policy that no literature, clothing, or other material associated with a candidate's campaign is permitted in this room. The forum will also be recorded and broadcast live to Channels 26, 27, 99, as well as the South San Francisco YouTube channel. The League and the city will run or link to the recordings from the beginning to end only, with no editing, and that's in compliance with the FCC rules, and the candidates have agreed to do the same. My name is Margie Gater, and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of North and Central San Mateo County. We'd like to thank the city of San Francisco for sponsoring this forum tonight. We appreciate their interest and efforts in presenting events that increase voters' knowledge about the candidates and issues. The League of Women Voters is a national nonpartisan volunteer organization. We welcome people of all genders. Our education mission is to encourage your active and informed participation in government at every level. The League does not endorse candidates or political parties. Our sole interest is helping voters gain fair and unbiased information to make informed decisions on or before Election Day. The purpose of a candidate forum is to provide an opportunity for all the candidates to be heard at one time and to be questioned by you, their potential constituents. By bringing the candidates and voters together face-to-face, this enables voters to make better informed decisions during the election. So thanks for coming out to learn more about the candidates and ask questions. Tonight, you will hear from the candidates for the South San Francisco City Council. The city recently transitioned to district elections. This means candidates are now elected by districts instead of at-large. There are two candidates for one seat in District One. There are three candidates for one seat in District Five. There is one candidate for one seat in District Three. That candidate, Flor Nicholas, was invited to the forum and decided not to attend. You also have two candidates for treasurer. Both were invited. Frank Rizzo declined. Annie Lowe accepted, but she's not here to participate due to the League policy that we don't conduct forums for races. If there's a two-person race and only one person elects to attend, it can appear that we're favoring that candidate, so we don't do a forum in that situation. The candidates by district are Marc Adegiyo.
It looks like and sounds like San Diego. Adiego.
Okay. Adiego. Adiego, I got it now. Marc Adiego. Also in District One is Angelique Presidente. In District Five is Eddie Flores, Brittany Burgow, and Tom Carney. And we have them in alphabetical order here on the dais. The term of office for all districts is four years. Again, this event provides a nonpartisan setting for voters to hear all the candidates. It's not for the supporters or opponents of any particular candidate in the audience to demonstrate their own views and preferences. So for now, we ask that you keep any expressions of disdain or delight to yourselves for now. We will thank all the candidates at the end of the forum. The ground rules. The rules for the forum are as follows. There will be an opening statement. Each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement. Then we will have question period. Each candidate will have one minute to answer. All the candidates will have an equal time to speak to the question, even if it's addressed to only one candidate. And then we'll have closing statements, and they will have two minutes for a closing statement. Our timekeeper is Afsoon Shadar. She's here in the middle. She will hold up warning signs when the candidate has one minute left in their closing or opening statement, and then 30 seconds. And at the end of the time, she will hold up a stop sign until the candidates have stopped speaking. You can finish your sentence, but please don't go on for a paragraph, okay? Our ushers tonight are Sheila Musselman and Edith Jones. You've probably seen them circulating with cards and pencils. Raise your hand if you need a question card or when you are ready to have someone pick up your question. For those of you viewing live, you can still submit questions to us to the same email as a lot of you did. Send us questions in advance, thank you. But for those of you who are watching live, you can still submit questions to questions@lwvnsmc.org. And I don't have that piece with me. Please, for you, those of you who are writing questions, please try to write legibly and clearly, and try to keep them brief. All the questions come to the moderator, and I will sort the questions by subject. My goal is to cover a variety of topics. We seldom have time to ask all the questions, and I might rephrase or combine questions at times. All right, after all that, it's time for opening statements. The candidates have drawn lots to determine the order in which they will speak. Each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement, and our first one is Eddie Flores.
Thank you. Good evening. Buenas noches. It's so great to see so many familiar faces here tonight. So many dedicated South City community members. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Eddie Flores. I'm a teacher, an immigrant, a former South City Parks and Rec Commissioner, a former Board President in our school district, and I have the great honor to serve the community and the residents of South San Francisco as your current council member. My family immigrated out of El Salvador when I was seven years old due to the Civil War. Having seen my single mother work three different types of jobs to make ends meet gave me a different perspective, a very interesting understanding of the struggles and sacrifices that those in our working families and immigrant communities meet. This, combined with my passion to serve and being an advocate for those less vulnerable, has led me to serve the community that I grew up in, a community that I love. We made history last year when I became South City's first Salvadorian-born immigrant to serve on City Council in the history of San Mateo County, and only the second Latino in the 120-plus-year history of our beautiful city. I was honored to have been unanimously selected from a pool of 17 applicants to this role. You know, as a council, I'm humbled to share that we have worked hard for our residents. I have hit the ground running from day one. Together, in our first year on council, we have led the creation of a guaranteed basic income pilot program, passed a $5 hazard pay for our central grocery store workers, secured over $100 million in affordable housing funds, passed strong environmental regulations for our new buildings, and voted and adopted Vision Zero. For those of you who don't know, it's to eliminate traffic fatalities and pedestrian injuries. But we didn't stop there. During the pandemic, we brought immediate relief to our small economic businesses. We created a shop local $40 gift program with and in partnership with our Chamber of Commerce, created an initial pilot program to deter catalytic converter thefts, and backed it up with emergency ordinance this year to deter and prevent the illegal possession of such. We voted to support the final financing and opening of our beautiful Caltrain station, voted in favor of creating a new City Commission on Public Safety and Equity, and Youth Commission as well, as well as created an award-winning Every Kid Deserves a Free Bike Program. This only happened because people from all over our community came together, and we saw a vision, a firm understanding that we needed to come together in order to move forward. I'm running for District Five to continue to bring a much-needed voice and representation to this district. I'm running because there is still much work to be done, and having the courage to fight and ensure the quality of our life for all of our residents is top priority. The work is just getting started, and there is much more work ahead. Thank you, everyone, again for being here, and I look forward to answering your questions tonight.
Thank you. Our next opening statement is Marc Adegiyo.
So it still looks like and sounds like Adiego.
I'll get it.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this together. I also thank our city clerk, Rosa Costa, for promoting it. But most of all, I would like to thank my fellow candidates and challenger, because without them, we wouldn't be experiencing democracy in South San Francisco in these two districts. I have a long history in South San Francisco, and I think it's important that we understand where we were and how we got here today. So I just wanted to share with you that, and I'm going to go back a little bit, that, you know, the industrial city was really closing up in the '70s. The major industry, Bethlehem Steel, United States Steel, were all basically going overseas, the steel production. And with those many multi-generational jobs, there were circumstances where you had both the grandfather, his son, and his grandson working at Bethlehem Steel. At the same time, towards the end of the '70s, Genentech arrives in South San Francisco and mostly goes unnoticed for about 15 years. It really wasn't until the 1990s that that industry began to expand. In the '80s, we created a redevelopment agency because we knew that we had to build the infrastructure to be able to accommodate the new industry that was poised to come into South San Francisco. South San Francisco has survived in great fashion, the dot-com collapse that was in the early 2000s, the mortgage meltdown that occurred in 2007 and '08 where many people lost the homes that they had worked so hard to purchase. And then, most recently, this COVID pandemic that really tested so many communities, so many families, so many individuals. And through all of this, South San Francisco remains economically strong and financially solvent, and that's to be celebrated. That's where we find ourselves today. During COVID, the city of South San Francisco was able to keep full-time people on payroll. For the most part, we kept part-time people on payroll until they were able to qualify for the unemployment that was both California and through the Federal Cares Act. I think that we have a lot to be concerned about. We have a lot to talk about tonight, but I think that generally, you must agree, that South San Francisco is in a tremendous position with the resources that are necessary to take care of the issues of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next opening statement is Angelique Presidente.
Hi, I'm Angelique Presidente. Why am I running? Residents and small businesses need to have a voice, and I don't feel as though we are being adequately represented right now in District One. Because I've never been the type of person to complain without taking action, I am standing up here. Can you hear me now? Should I start over? I could talk fast. Here we go. Why am I running? Residents and small businesses need to have a voice, and I don't feel as though right now we adequately have one. Because I've never been the type of person to complain without taking action, and it's time for me to step up and take some. It's time for somebody to stand up against the corruption going on while taking action to eliminate it from our city and decision-makers. It's time that the experience that our residents have matters. Everything that we go through on a day-to-day basis is our own experiences, and that's what needs to be taken into account. That's what's being avoided. Some of our council members own stock in Merck and Gilead, and that is a conflict of interest. The stock is worth over $1 million per council member. We don't know how much over $1 million that is, because the little check box on the Form 700 only goes to $1 million or more. It's time that the decision-makers on our city council are not swayed by the corporations, and it's time that we're heard. Please vote for Presidente. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next opening statement is Tom Carney.
Good evening. My name is Tom Carney. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I'm going to jump in, as our time is limited. I lived and worked in District Five, South San Francisco, for 30 years. I worked for the Fire Department, South San Francisco Public Works, for six years, Fire Department for 26. I've lived and worked in the city. I see what goes on after 5:00, 6:00, 8:00 at night. I did not move from District One to District Five just to meet the voting requirements three months ago. I'm a lifelong resident who actually takes part in the community. I have led many programs in South San Francisco. One was the Food Drive, which was dropped by a nonprofit in the downtown over 20 years ago. I took that, and I put it together, and I got rid of all the canned foods, and now, today, it serves over 500 families, 80 pounds of fresh produce, and a turkey to the low-income and needy families. We don't check. If you want the food, you get it. It's not like we can't afford the food in the richest country in the world, but nobody should go without, and especially the people in District Five which have large families. I'm raising three kids with my wife in South San Francisco. I know the struggles of people in District Five, and I know what goes on. We're a desert for parks and grocery stores, the blight, the trash, the homeless, and the breaking down of the infrastructure is a disgrace. For a city that's busting with money, bringing in big dollars from Easter 101, I think we should be ashamed of ourselves the way it looks. It does not meet the needs of the residents, and I can say that because I live here for 30 years. I'm not just a Johnny-come-lately showing up and saying what we should do. I've lived it, I know it. During emergency times in South San Francisco, Francisco terrorists, I was a lead coordinator. Over 30, 40 families went over the five feet of water. I was there 24/7. Not one family was displaced. They went to a hotel, motel, or the property owner put them into a house. Easter 101 is making millions and millions of dollars every day. Do you see it in District Five or in South San Francisco? Our sidewalks is atrocious, our streets. Our street lighting is defunct. Our residents deserve better. We're an older community on fixed income, tax, tax, tax. That's how the problem's solved, right out of your wallet. I'm not in for that. I'm in for taking care of the people who've worked their fingers to the bone in South San Francisco and made it what it is. The corporations, Easter 101, need to step up the plate, pay their taxes, and take part. If we revitalized our downtown, we would bring a lot of people in, and on a Thursday or Friday, when people are leaving, rather than drive to other cities, they would come into our downtown, have dinner, hang out, and maybe they would move here. And maybe our schools wouldn't be going short of kids. We gotta take care of the residents, and I, number one, are going to be your voice, and I'm going to stand up. I'm not one to back away from being exploited, and I think our residents are. Thank you.
Our final opening statement is Brittany Burgow.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and Rosa for putting this forum together. My name is Brittany Burgow, and I have lived in South San Francisco for 20 years, in which I have lived in three different parts of District Five. South City is my home, where I've gone to school, volunteered, and have worked. I have worked at the local Boys and Girls Club for 10 years and have been a strong community advocate for District Five with the group Hothra, also known as Friends of Old Town, since 2014. I am a proud first-generation college graduate, where I have received my AA degree in Administration of Justice and my BA degree in Human Development. I know what it means to be hardworking and dedicated. I've gained the trust from many families in the community through my experience working at the Boys and Girls Club. I've connected with my community by having food and toy drives during the holidays when residents needed it the most. I've also promoted getting our community together at our National Night Out event recently that was an extreme success, where our community got together to enjoy time together, meet with Fire Department and Police Department and other elected officials. I have advocated and accomplished by volunteering and being a part of the Park and Rec Commission, by having safer streets, approving for parks in District Five, connecting with Samtrans to get bus shelters and more convenient bus routes. I am running for City Council to continue to advocate for District Five in order for the generations before me, my generation, and the generations to come to be able to live in our area. Development, businesses, and residents can live in our wonderful town, but there has to be a balance. I want to be your voice on how we can achieve that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now it's time for the candidates to answer your questions. Again, if you've not written a question and want to, please raise your hand, and one of the ushers will bring you a card to write a question and pick it up from you when you're ready. Also, I just want to be clear, I don't ask questions with any personal invective or any attacks on the candidates. And candidates, just a reminder, we're here to talk about yourselves and your qualifications for office and the issues, and we will, nobody's crossed any lines, but we will call out of order if you are out of order. So with that, each candidate, I should explain, each candidate will have one minute to answer. I will vary the order in which the candidates are called upon to speak. If a question is addressed to a particular candidate, that candidate will answer first, and the other candidates will have a chance to respond as well. All right, so our first question is, please tell us how your experience All right, so our first question is, please tell us how your experience living in South San Francisco has helped you to understand the local issues, and why do you feel you are best equipped to respond to those issues and direct improvements? Please tell us how your experience living in South San Francisco has helped you to understand local issues, and why do you feel you are best equipped to respond to those issues and direct improvements? And first is Mark Adiego.
Excellent, excellent. So I, you know, I was fortunate to have grown up in Sunshine Gardens, spent my first 25 years there, and then, at the time I was first elected, because I was elected many years ago, I call that my internship. In the 80s, I was on city council, and I was encouraged by my mother to move into a place of my own now that I was a councilman. So the issues in South San Francisco are everyday, and, you know, you grow up with them, and how can you not be aware of what's happening? I really do have to respond to a charge that was made earlier because I'm proud of the success of my grandfather in South San Francisco, a success that has accrued to my parents' benefit and my own. My grandfather was a night watchman when he first came to South San Francisco for a company called Marine Magnesium. Marine Magnesium was sold in 1948 to Merck, and that began the family story.
Thank you. Next is Eddie Flores.
Thank you. You know, my family and I first became part of South City community when I immigrated to escape El Salvadorian Civil War, like I mentioned earlier. But it was during this time, and I want to be clearly, clearly, clearly with everyone, that as a renter, we moved around because that's what happens to renters. We get evicted, we get pushed out, we get brought in and we get brought out. Many folks would question my integrity in terms of either committing to a certain amount of years that I have been in South City. I will tell you that there is no absolute, one single bit of doubt that this is the community that I love. This is the community that I will fight for, that I will represent, and I will advocate both at the regional level when I represent South City and I bring the opportunities and the money back to South San Francisco. The community has reached out to me, and they have put me in these positions. I have not wanted to be a politician, and I still don't look at myself as one. It was the community that wanted representation, and that drove me to being a Parks and Rec Commissioner, that drove me to being on the school board, and that brought me to being on council member. Thank you.
And next is Angelique Presidente.
I don't have the same amount of experience at the council level as my opponent, but that's a good thing. Rather than experience making decisions that line my pockets, I have experiences as a resident and the aftermath of those decisions that we all have to live with. The same experiences most of you endure daily. I have lived here for 42, 43 years, I just had a birthday. I am a mother of four. My children are fourth generation in District 1. We have lived here, we have all gone to school here. I graduated from El Camino High School. My mother graduated from El Camino High School, and two of my sons have graduated from El Camino High School. We experience daily what the residents in this community experience as well. I have to take my kids to school. I have to try and get there on time and fight through the traffic, through the construction. I have to sit here and get the alerts to flex my power and flex my water because the infrastructure is not matching the amount of development that we have in the city right now. I experience daily what you are experiencing. That's what makes me want to do something for you and be your voice.
Thank you. And next is Tom Carney.
Thank you. I immigrated here, and I set up to live in South San Francisco, immigrated here over 35 years ago, and I set up in South San Francisco over 30 years ago. I was very fortunate to come from the trades and had a skill and was hired by the city. I was very fortunate and thankful for the city, the great job it gave me. I have worked tirelessly in the downtown community. I even took on the Myers Development with Hothra. I've been with Hothra for over 30 years. Former Mayor Pedro Gonzalez set that up, and me and him battled with Myers Development on Terra Bay, and it was to get compliance with the EIR. It was affecting Paradise Valley, Downtown, and Pec Slot. And we were very successful. It was a hard battle, but it was fighting for the community. The food drives, the toy drives, I did fire code enforcement inspections for 30 years. I'm a problem solver. I see how the people live. I've been in the apartments, and the amount of abandoned apartments in South San Francisco is unbelievable. And if there is a question, I'll get into that later. But the housing thing, we've got to look at the stock, but not alone that. I've been very involved in the community and also with the baseball coaching. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, our final response is from Brittany Burgow.
As I stated before, I've lived in District 5 in three different parts, on Commercial, Aspen, and Madrone. So as you know, these areas can differ in needs, so that's why I feel like I have a personal understanding of District 5. Since volunteering back in 2014 with Hothra, also known as Friends of Old Town, I've made many personal connections with many residents, families, businesses, and developers, and that's why I feel that I am equipped to represent District 5. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is, if you are elected to city council, what will be your top priorities? What do you see as the biggest issue facing South City? And we'll just leave it at that. Top priority, the biggest issue, and your top priorities facing the city? And first is Tom Carney.
Our top priorities is revitalizing of the downtown and District 5. District 5 is underserved, majorly underserved, and it does not reflect what's happening in ESTA 101. Our downtown, I want to bring the farmer's market to the downtown, revitalize the storefronts, and clean up the downtown, address the housing, the homeless problem, and then also, on the Linden Avenue, address the lack of parks. We've got to bring in the parks. I want to form a task force also to look at the downtown area and get merchants, businesses together, and homeowners, and come up with positive solutions. Have town hall meetings, not pop-up meetings. Everybody's invited, and their opinion matters. Then we can address it all together as one, but we've got to get a plan in place. There's no plan in place right now, and the traffic congestion, the construction, the contractors taking over the streets has taken away from the residents' quality of life. We've got to get this ship back on track, and we've got to work together. And open communication between council and the residents is very important. It's not happening now.
Thank you. Next is Angelique Presidente.
Top priorities, our biggest issue, the imbalance of development and infrastructure. There is a lot of development going on, and there is not enough infrastructure to back it up. Our quality of life is lacking. Traffic is ridiculous. District-wise parking, people are fighting over parking spaces in front of the residential neighborhoods. People are putting cones and garbage cans in the place to try and save their parking spots. We have three parks in District 1, and all three are on the west side of El Camino Real with zero place to congregate in District 1 on the east side. We've been fighting for a park on that side for decades, and yet we still have no place to have a birthday party or to bring our kids to play at the park. This is ridiculous, and it's something that needs to be focused on.
Thank you. Next is Brittany Burgow.
I believe the main issue in District 5 is that we are running out of space. We have had a huge increase in development over the last five years with many apartment buildings in which none are truly affordable for our current residents. The issue right now is how can we stay true to our industrial roots of South San Francisco, maintain our biotech companies in our area, support our small businesses to thrive while also making sure our people can still live here without getting displaced? We must better support our current South City families to be able to still live here and maintain our culture. I think we need to focus on having safer streets, wheelchair-accessible sidewalks, repainting the curbs, having increased speed bumps in neighborhoods that actually work, more crosswalks with lights because our residents walk a lot to get to where they need to go. The disposal of garbage also needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Next is Mark Adiego.
I'm certain that throughout the city of South San Francisco, housing, affordable housing opportunities for all ages and all income levels is really ultimately at the top of the agenda as far as what the city needs to work on to make a healthier community and keep it a vibrant economic community. You know, we're really focused now on the missing middle because there are opportunities for low-income housing. There are certainly multiple opportunities for market-rate housing in so many locations in South San Francisco, but with each of those market-rate housing, there is a 15% inclusion rate. So if you do have a large building that has 200 units, you have 15% or 30 units that are in the affordable range for that missing middle, and that's so very important. I mean, that's the equivalent of a small-city block of homes. I do need to correct someone. Affordable units are coming out of the ground and nearing completion at Linden Avenue and also on Grand Avenue near Cypress, so we are having some success.
Thank you. And next is Eddie Flores.
Thank you. You know, I'm committed to giving the best to South City because South City deserves the best. Addressing displacement and gentrification in District 5 is really important, continuing to work to make housing more affordable, bringing in new parks and green open spaces to Old Town, which we are already doing, and cleaning up already everything from Airport Boulevard to our inner areas of District 5. We created already a program that is in full effect, be part of the solution, not the pollution, where residents have already gotten this voucher program to be able to clear and completely get rid of illegal dumping in District 5. We need to beautify our area. We need to bring the much-needed resources, not just in terms of housing, but also investments and better access for seniors, for our students, and also for our renters. But most importantly, bring the resources to the community where they need it and meet them where they are, in the language that they can understand and bring them along, not further divide them and push them away. A community is strong when our community comes along. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we did get a lot of questions about housing, so I will ask a few here so you don't have to do your entire housing spiel in one minute. We'll have a couple of questions. The first one is, due to state law and the regional housing needs allocation, the city of South San Francisco will have to build at least 4,000 units of housing over the next six years. If elected, where would you want that housing to be built? I'll repeat, due to state law and the RINA, the city of South San Francisco will have to build at least 4,000 units of housing over the next six years. Where would you like to see the housing to be built? And first is Angelique Presidente.
Well, I understand the state requirements. I also understand that building teaching housing, teacher housing, actually goes along with those same requirements. So when we build teacher housing, it actually contributes to that. So I hope that we can, instead of building all these affordable, which truly are unaffordable housing units that are popping up all over South City, that we can actually focus more on the needs of our residents and the actual housing crisis for our teachers and locals of the Bay Area. Because right now, I don't feel as though those needs are being addressed currently with the developments that are going up all over South City. So as far as where they should be, I'm sure we have a lot of places we can put them at the moment, but I think that we're losing focus on what they should be, and not necessarily these affordable that no one can afford, and more so something that people can benefit from.
Thank you. Next is Brittany Burgow.
I completely understand the requirements that are coming from the state to build, and I want to talk about it in a way that it does not have to be centralized in District 5. I want to explore more ways that we can spread out throughout South San Francisco in order to keep up with the requirements. I also would like to address, what is that, what kind of problems are going to come about that? Where are we going to continue to park? Where are we going to go grocery shopping? So to take all of that into consideration.
Thank you. And next is Mark Adiego.
Thank you. You know, the housing state law tells us we have to have, identify where we can build 4,000 units. The city will not be building 4,000 units. It's up to the developers to make those projects happen. And if you look at what's happening in South San Francisco, there are a number of projects, a couple over on Huntington Avenue, the old Century Theater, and across the street where the old AT&amp;T yard was. And those are in the pipeline, but they're not coming out of the ground yet for the same reason that people aren't buying houses as readily. So there's been a change in the marketplace as far as the financing. There's definitely a slowdown, and I think it's a relief to both the residents and some council people that there's a slowdown. But I think that, to be honest with you, if we're looking at where in South San Francisco we can accommodate, we really have to look at the El Camino Real, where we've had some success with larger developments, and we have the infrastructure there to be able to move people in and out of their residence.
Thank you. Next is Eddie Flores.
You know, housing is really important, especially for newer families as well as older families. And why I mean older families is our senior citizens. They definitely need to serve affordable housing as we've seen it in the many properties that we have in District 5. All of our city, whether it's from north to south, west to east, we should have that available as well for any opportunity for senior housing as well. We need to look at other areas. ESTA 101, we looked at that area previously. There's a lot of factors that we need to consider. There's already a lot of areas in the Lindenville Commercial Corridor that we need to look at as well. We don't want to see abandoned signs or property that has gone to waste. We need to look into that. But that's why there's a zoning plan, that's why there's a general plan to outline what we're going to do. Transit-oriented communities. Build it near transit. Build it near BART, build it near trains. That makes the most sense because then we don't really have to worry about parking for these units because people will walk to these areas to get public transportation.
Thank you. And finally, Tom Carney.
I think what we need to do, we need to pump the brakes. We need to slow down a little bit, and I think the economy is going to do that next year. I think we have a little downturn coming, and I think it's going to give us a chance to get our tools together. We have all the tools in South San Francisco. I think we should explore ESTA 101 because we have the ferry terminal, we have the train station, we have buses, we have everything right there. So we need to take a look at that, and then what we need to do is get the Lowe's store, and we need to turn that into either Safeway or a grocery store of some type and maybe augmented with a Walgreens, and then that'll bring a balance, bring some restaurants and places for people to go out there. But if you have the housing, work and housing go together, and you're not crossing town. Also, on Grand Avenue, we have about 50 or 60 vacant units. That's not livable. I did the housing inspections. I see them. They've been vacant for about 20 years. Why don't we explore about working with the property owners to bring them up to living standard? We don't even have to do anything, just get them to fix it up. So we're missing the mark when we go there because the 1 and 200 block of Grand Avenue is vacant because not livable. Thank you.
Thank you. Had a lot of questions about the competing interests of the biotech community and the residential, resident community, so I'll ask it with these two questions that were submitted. South San Francisco recently celebrated the opening of a very large Amgen building and addition of 600 more jobs. Can you elaborate on what does that do to our already seemingly impossible-to-meet RINA goals? Another biotech campus was just approved on the city's southern border, assuming that will create many jobs. Won't that exacerbate the RINA numbers? Or, as another resident put it, our city is biotech corporation, appears to be biotech corporations first and the residents second. How will you change this? So the competing interests between biotech and residents. And first on this is Brittany Burgow.
Thank you. I believe that the biotech campuses have already been approved. There's not much we can do about that currently. They are going to provide more jobs, but we still have many areas in our town and in South San Francisco that we can provide more housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tom Carney.
Could we ask, could I ask a question again, please?
Sure. It's basically about the competing interests between the biotech industry and the city and the residents' interests. So the Amgen building was recently opened. There's another biotech campus approved that will create hundreds of jobs. It'll also exacerbate the city's RINA numbers, and how will you address the competing interests?
I think having jobs is a good thing. I think that's what we've always been looking for. The thing what we might want to look at, again, I'm going to go back to ESTA 101, what about Amgen looking, exploring about some form of housing for their employees? And this way, it would offset those numbers, and it would really help us. Maybe in lieu that Amgen give us some money to help the city, find a nonprofit or a contractor that could set them up to build some housing to meet those needs. I think that's another way of looking at it. We can stifle jobs. Jobs is what we need. But what we need to look at too is get more of our residents in South San Francisco working over there in those well-paying jobs. Get our kids educated with a science background so they can actually get these jobs and bring the money back to their own community. And I think that we can stifle jobs, but we've got to have a fair balance too. The more jobs you create, the more housing. That's the way it works. So if we get more jobs, we have to provide more housing, but in getting those jobs, let's work with the biotechs to make housing.
Thank you. And next is Eddie Flores.
Thank you. You know, we really need to monitor that jobs-to-housing ratio. If you haven't looked at what that is for South City, look at it, and it's really important that we address it and we monitor as council members. Number two, I'm not about putting industry Number two, I'm not about putting industries against each other. Bioscience and life, life sciences has been a very important partner in South San Francisco. They created our science garage in our South San Francisco Unified School District. They have financed and brought a lot of careers and many numerous scholarships to many of our students and programs here in South San Francisco. They bring in a lot of economic vitality and development, including, we can't forget, Genentech comes to town, where they, they infiltrate and bring a lot of economic life to our small mom-and-pop businesses on, in District Five and up and down Grand Avenue. We need to work together, bring communities along, and that includes the community of biotech and life sciences. Not separating, not distancing ourselves, but finding key pathways and common ground so that we do move forward for a more sustainable
Thank you.
South City.
Thank you. And next is Angelique Presidente.
I believe that allowing these expansions to occur with the biotech and pharmaceutical companies is weighing on our housing crisis. At the moment, they, they're global companies, you know, they're bringing people in from around the world. And while that's nice to have, you know, diversity, when you don't have the infrastructure or the development to support it, it's a problem. When they bring these families over, a lot of the times the companies supplement their housing as part of their contracts. So they don't have to worry about how much they're paying, because really, it doesn't matter to them, right? They're getting it supplemented. I think the way to improve that would be to focus on our residents, to allow our residents to be working in some of these companies, to make sort of a funnel between the school system and these companies so that the kids in these science programs can have a program that'll allow them to go to these companies straight out of graduation. I think there's a lot of ways that we can focus on biotech to help improve this issue, but right now, it's not happening.
Thank you. And finally, Mark Adiego.
Thank you. Jobs are a good thing. Thank you, Tom. Not all jobs in biotech are science jobs. There are plenty of support positions. Just the other evening, the Challenger and myself were at a, at a home where we were talking about issues in District One, specifically Sunshine Gardens. And of the 10 people assembled that were working people, two of those people were in biotech. So it is happening. The numbers continue to increase, and it's something that we do need to encourage. For the whole town, what the advantage is in all the investment in East of 101, year over year, if you look at the assessed valuation of South San Francisco, it grew by 12 and a half percent in one year, which is an additional $5 million in property tax to be used for everything that the general fund is supposed to support, including the contracts that we negotiated recently with our city workers, allowing them to be some of the best paid on the peninsula. I'm proud of that.
Thank you. Let's talk about the new districts. Is there something specific in your district you would like to address? And also, what will be your governing style with respect to districts versus, your district versus overall South San Francisco city's needs? So let's talk about the new districts. Is there something specific in your district you would like to address? And what will be your governing style with respect to your district's needs in relation to South San Francisco city needs? And we will start with Eddie Flores.
Thank you. You know, District Five has a population of 56% Latino. Latinos that, for one reason or another, in, in many years have been, have not had a voice at the table, have not had a seat at the table or much less representation. As I came from school board, a lot of individuals and families were really excited that I came on board, not just because of the position, but my ability to identify with them in their native language, in their native culture, and understand the needs of the communities as immigrants and those that have been left aside. You know, I helped champion and fought hard so that we could have vaccine satellite tents during the pandemic, at the height of that pandemic. The county would say, hey, bring them over to Samhail County Event Center. But I fought hard, and I said, our community doesn't have the transportation means to do it. Our community, our senior community, needs it right here on Linden, and fought hard and brought those satellite tents, where many individuals received for the first time their vaccination and their COVID testing. That's what the community needs, to meet them where they are. Don't tell our community where to go and what to do. That's the type of representation I'll be.
Thank you. Next is Mark Adiego.
You know, District One is really not that different from the rest of the city when it comes to some of the issues of the day. And we talked about earlier, illegal dumping, you know, in, in many of the empty lots that are in Sunshine Gardens, especially, for some reason, the corner of Grand and Mission Road. There's a lot of illegal dumping going on there. And the city does have a program. If it's reported, it's picked up. And, and I've had the opportunity, because I'm out there every day trying to find votes, that I've reported a couple of major dumpings. It was told to me that Willow Gardens remains a real problem, as it always has been. And until we can get maybe a voucher program for the people that live in, in those apartments, we need to continue to be proactive and, and pick up the garbage. So I think that, really, when I, when I think of the district, I'm still thinking of all of South San Francisco. I, I don't want to balkanize things where I become only involved in one little part of South San Francisco. But district elections make you responsible, and so you do make those calls on behalf of the residents.
Thank you. And next is Tom Carney.
Thank you. I think I have a unique perspective on that, because I've lived in District Five in the downtown for 30 years. I've seen the changes, and I've seen how our district needs help. We need grocery stores. We need parks. We need open space. And we need the streets to be cleaned up. We need a community center, and we need to get the kids off the street. We know what happened many years ago with kids being on the street. So we need to have activities. We need to have sports fields. From Orange Park all the way over to the water, East of 101, we have no parks, no open space. We have nothing for the kids. I'm the only one that Mayor Pedro Gonzalez in District Five has, has endorsed, because Pedro feels, I know what's going on. I've lived there, and I've worked with him. What we need to do is take care of the families, provide jobs, provide places for the kids to go and a place to shop. We are not meeting the needs of District Five residents right now, and the whole of South San Francisco. Again, a council member represents the whole city, but when you're in District Five, you will be listening to the needs. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Brittany Burgo. Can you repeat the question, please? Sure. It's about new districts. Is there something specific in the district you'd like to address? And what will be your governing style with respect to your district and the overall city's needs?
Thank you. I believe District Five has different needs than the rest of South San Francisco. It definitely, definitely needs to be beautified and cleaned up and improved of our safety. I think we need to build a relationship with our law enforcement officers to keep us safe and to feel safe in our area. And I've worked on that by promoting kids playing soccer with the police officers. I believe a community center is definitely needed in our area. The Civic Campus is coming soon, which is going to be beautiful. But we need a closer resource center for our current residents, who can help with housing, help with food distribution, and mentoring programs, and childcare, and college readiness for our young people, and also job seeking. I have lived in different, three different parts of District Five, but I have lived in District One and District Three as well. So I have a full understanding of South San Francisco as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Angelique Presidente.
Things I would like to address in District One. I mentioned before, you know, we do not have a park or playground on the east side of District One. I believe that we have to address the PUC development and the fact that the city keeps raising the height level against the residents. And the residents have always agreed to three to five, but yet I keep hearing it's going to six to eight, or even taller, to 12 plus. I think that our quality of life in District One, as well as South San Francisco, needs to be improved. I think that we do need more programs for children and even adults. And I'm hoping that the new civic center will offer more, because at the moment, we don't offer enough for our residents. I think that the fact that District One really hasn't had anyone represent us, even though we have council members that have lived in District One and claim to have helped us, honestly, we haven't seen anything. And I think that that doesn't go along with having districts separated. We should have had people representing us all along.
Thank you. Our next question is, what is your plan for economic diversification and job creation? What is your plan for economic diversification and job creation? And first is Mark Adiego. Andy, Adiego.
Mark Adiego. So, you know, the city, I think what, what we have to realize is that biotech is not a monolithic business. There are companies that deal with medical devices. There are companies that deal with, with medicines, with viruses. So it's not a monolithic industry. But as far as economic diversity, what we're finding is that this is a great home for businesses that are no longer willing to do business in San Francisco. So recently, a financial tech company named Stripe came out to South San Francisco and, and leased what we thought was going to be more biotech for, for their purposes. So it's a financial services company that has a big presence, about 1,000 employees, most of who, I understand, still live in San Francisco, so they have their, they have their homes. And then on the other side would be food. A lot of food businesses have left South San Francisco, and there's a lot of businesses, bakeries, and food services that, that are entering the town.
Thank you. Next is Eddie Flores.
Thank you. Economic vitality and economic development is very important. That's why our council was the first to lead in the creation and bringing about the Economic Advancement Center in partnership with Entrepreneurial Center, as well as Job Train. We have the resources as a hub, a North County hub, that has been already utilized and provided many numerous jobs for our community, Spanish-speaking community that has come in and trained, whether it was individuals and, and perhaps business owners that decided to pivot during the pandemic and go into e-commerce business, or someone that wanted to create a new business. We have that right here on Grand Avenue, and it serves not just South City, but the multiple North County cities. And that's where we're focusing on. We needed a central location that can be also welcoming to our Spanish-speaking community, our unemployed community, and also serve as a hub for education and train, and also to be able to partner with our labor unions and trades. That's a central hub and a central location that we can really focus on to increase economic vitality and job development.
Thank you. And next is Angelique Presidente.
I think that the focus in our city is always on biotech and pharmaceuticals. When I was growing up in middle school, we had electives that focused on woodworking, metals, ceramics, art, home ec, things that taught kids how to survive daily, you know, doing things if something broke down at their home, or on their car, or something, right? Not everything was focused just on science. And I think that in order to bring back diversity with job creation, we need to bring back some of these trades to the schools. We need to work with the local unions and bring these back to help teach our kids and help funnel some, some new skilled workers into our economy.
Thank you. Next is Tom Carney.
Thank you. I think that we need to diversify a little bit more. The biotech is booming, doing good, but there's always a downturn, just like Silicon Valley went through with the computers. So we diversify a little bit more, be careful of our zoning pushing companies out. And if we push out all the other types of jobs, then, you know, your cookie cutter, you, you can only work in the life science. Not every kid is cut out for that. I was cut out for the trades. You can't be, if you can't be a doctor or scientist if you don't want to, or you don't have the education. You just don't want to go to school. So we should look at diversifying. And then also, our restaurants and revitalizing the downtown is going to give service jobs. Not everybody wants to work in a biotech. Maybe you want to work in a restaurant, work in a food service place, or something like that. But what we have to do is work together in that, revitalize the whole District Five and the whole city. Then jobs will come in, and they'll diversify, because the demand will be there. Right now, the big line in the room is biotech, which is good, but it's pushing everything else out, and it's actually coming over to the residential area. So we gotta be careful how we do that, and we gotta manage it. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Brittany Burgo.
I think Job Train and the Renaissance Center is a great resource. I think that we can connect with them more to provide more job training and resume training and college readiness. I think there is a gap between the school district currently, and we can close that a little bit more and have a mentoring program that is desperately needed at many schools, in order to keep our kids to continue working here and living here. And I think it can start with by inventing programs early in our park and rec, childcare, and, and STEAM-related activities, or figuring out what the interests are in our children so they can explore and begin to find out what they would like to do when they are out of high school. And farmers markets can also help promote our town and keep revenue flowing, and also provide more jobs for cleanup and things like that.
Thank you. Our next question is about schools. What do you believe the collaboration should be between the school district and the city? What kind of collaboration should be happening between the school district and the city? And also, could you please state your position on the Measure DD, Free Preschool for All in South San Francisco? So your position on Measure DD, preschool for all in South San Francisco, and in general, how do you feel like the school districts and the city should be collaborating? And first is Tom Carney.
DD, I think it's good. I know myself, I struggle with daycare and needs for the kids. And it's going to be, the biotechs is going to fund it. So I think it's, it's a good give back for those businesses. We just got to be careful that the smaller businesses that have a few employees but meet the minimum square footage don't get pushed out or leave. City and school district should work hand in hand. There's not a good working relationship right now. The schools and the city share parks, but the parks need a lot of work. So what needs to happen is they need to talk to you, they need to work together. Because the city is a desert without parks. If they hadn't got the school district, we'd have no parks. So they have agreements, but they need to sit down and work them out. And they need to have open door policy with each other and have good communication, because parks is what keeps the kids off the street, and we can keep all our ballgames. Myself, I'm, I'm, I'm coaching, but our team has moved down to Millbrae, because Fields just can't take the games. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Angelique Presidente.
So I have four children. My youngest is three. Trying to find childcare for my youngest has been an issue. There's a three-to-four-year waitlist in our city. And although they want to try and say it's because we have, you know, awesome childcare, which is not wrong, we do, I think it's more about supply and demand, and the fact that there is way less supply than there is demand. And something needs to address that issue. I think DD helps it. I think that the ads against it right now are deceptive. I believe that every registered voter needs to look deeper and see why the council members who are against it are speaking up against it, you know? Is it because of their over a million dollar stock interests? That is something that should be addressed. The other thing, of course, we should work hand in hand with our school district. I don't feel as though that is happening now. I feel as though publicly, we need to have better access to some of these fields and playgrounds, and we're not. We're being locked out, and I think that needs to change.
Thank you. Next is Brittany Burgo.
Coming from the Boys and Girls Club, I have a passion for childcare and communicating with the city and the school district is going to be extremely important. And right now, I think we need to communicate and collaborate more in order to stay on the same page for the safety and health for our families. I think childcare programs can be enriched a little bit better, and we need to take into consideration our families who have more than one child. And childcare right now can, is very expensive. So my take on Measure DD would be yes.
Thank you. Next is Mark Adiego.
So I am not okay with the provisions in Measure DD that result in a situation where we are going to be taking $55 million out of the business community, and 22 million of that is from one corporation. And yes, Genentech can afford $22 million, but there's something inherently wrong about that formula. It really needs to be something that's shared by the entire business community. It bothers me that a business like Amazon is operating in South San Francisco and will pay nothing into that fund. But the big flaw in DD is really the fact that it's not just for South San Francisco children. So if you come to work in South San Francisco, if you have a part-time job and work eight hours one day a week, you have the opportunity to have your children be part of the childcare for all. And that's before all of the positions are filled for local children, and that's a flaw.
Thank you. And finally, Eddie Flores.
Thank you. You know, as an educator and former school board president, the only one running and the only one currently on city council, I have the experience to take us if and when Measure DD gets, gets approved. It comes with a lot of responsibility for the future council. It will take up to 18 months to implement it, but those are going to be hard-working months to figure out a lot of the unsolved questions and bring folks to the table to really understand. I have the experience as an educator and a former school board president to get it done. I, I also serve on the council's Two by Two, which is a liaison committee that we meet weekly with the school board. You know, one example that I can help illustrate of how I'm creating linkages and bridges between the city council is the Every Kid is the Every Kid Serves a Bike program, where we helped distribute over 200 free bikes, helmets, and locks to students at Martin and Spruce Elementary. We didn't go and say, "School district, provide the funds." We went out and provided the funds in order to get the kids off the street and give them place to play and be out and about active.
Thank you. Our next question, I like how this person phrased this one. District 5 candidates, do you plan to advocate and champion for South City's most socio-economic disadvantaged community, Old Town Youth and Schools? And District 1 candidates, could you tell us how you would support your District 5 colleagues in supporting Old Town socio-economic disadvantaged families? So, all the candidates, do you plan to advocate and champion for South City's most socio-economic disadvantaged community, Old Town Youth and Schools? And we will start with Angelique Presidente.
I have always advocated for youth and schools. So as a mother of four, kids are near and dear to my heart. As a candidate who has low income, I most definitely will advocate for those who need it the most. As far as me helping District 5, of course. Hands down, I will be a part of any and all programs to help assist in any district in our city with people who need it the most. I think that the program we have right now that's piloted for the garbage cleanup and whatnot needs to be expanded. There's a lot of people in low-income housing who don't have a way to get rid of this garbage, you know? They don't have cars. They don't have way to be mobile to move it. And I think that's one way we can help them. You know, once you get rid of some of these things that are bogging people down, trash or whatnot that's being in their communities, that's a quality of life issue that should be addressed.
Thank you. And next is Brittany Burgo.
I worked at the local Boys and Girls Club for 10 years. I worked at Sunshine Gardens. I worked at Orange Park, and I worked at Paradise Valley. I ended my career at Boys and Girls Club due to COVID at the Paradise Valley Boys and Girls Club as the director with the highest achieving numbers towards the end, which was an extreme success. So I have the experience of working with the disadvantaged and hearing their voices and have always advocated for them, and I plan to continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Mark Adiego.
So this is an interesting side to district elections, because even in a town that is relatively flush with cash, there are limited resources, and there are endless projects and endless ideas of how to better the quality of life in South San Francisco. And so we walk kind of a tightrope with that. And it'll be interesting to see who's really committed to the entire town or is only interested in their district. But I must tell you, Eddie Flores touched on the Economic Advancement Center. That is one thing that I'm most proud of because it has both Job Train for people that want to improve their skills and get a better job, and it also has the resource, I'm sorry, Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center. And that group will take, if you have a business idea, they will help you develop that idea. If you have a business and you want to expand it, they will show you how to expand it. And they've already had a great deal of success. But we have to get that program out into all the districts because there's plenty of people with great ideas in District 1.
Thank you. And next is Eddie Flores.
You know, I was really happy to champion and be able to be a yes vote on our guaranteed basic pilot program, which gave over 160 families throughout South San Francisco, in particular, many in District 5, $500 a month for almost a year. Those are the needs, those who we were addressing. I also created with the ARPA funds, the federal money that came in from DC, appropriated $100,000 to create our Shop Local Gift, $40 gift program, where we gave those that were unemployed, gave those that were food insecure. And the incentive was that they needed to invest it back in our local businesses, restaurants here on Grand Avenue and Spruce. Win-win for both. That's what I'm thinking. My idea of supporting low income speaks for the deliverables and the yes votes and the programs that I've helped champion and move forward along for all residents here in South San Francisco.
Thank you. And finally, Tom Carney.
Thank you. We're 20 years behind in District 5, and especially in the downtown. We've been disadvantaged, overlooked, and ignored. It's shame, the way it looks, but it can be turned around. I would reopen the Boys and Girls Club. One of the candidates in District 5 right now sits on the board that was closed down. The Boys and Girls Club was closed down in April. I want that reopened to get kids off the street. Also, I want to talk with the trade unions and bring in a training center into South San Francisco. This ways the kids can get a skill in a trade and make a good living wage and work in some of these construction jobs here that's going by them. Teach people how to fish. Don't give them handouts. Teach people how to earn a living for themselves. Give them the life skills, and away they go. We don't have to do handouts. That's what I want to do. Get people up and running by themselves. No handouts. Teach them how to make a living. That's easily done. We just have to set that level, bring in the unions, electrical, carpenters. All these unions are going to give good paying jobs. Work in here.
Thank you. There were a couple of questions about representation. One in general is, how will you ensure that underrepresented communities will have a place at the table? And specifically, one resident feels the police department and fire department are mostly white, especially at the top levels. How can we make them more representative and have more people of color on those teams? So, representation in general, how will you ensure that unrepresented communities will have a place at the table? And specifically, public servants in the police and fire departments, how will you make them more diverse? And we will start with Brittany Burgo.
I believe I have a deep connection with District 5 because of many families that I have talked to. And through my volunteer work since 2014, I have talked to many, many residents and families. And I believe that I have advocated and have been their voice, going to city council to express their concerns and needs. And in order to get representation, we have to build a relationship with law enforcement and fire department. I have been in touch with Scott Campbell and the DESMA, and I think I have made strides, like I mentioned before, at our National Night Out. We had a soccer game with our kids and police officers. So start relationship building with our current law enforcement, and we can continue to advocate and be the voice for our underrepresented.
Thank you. And next is Tom Carney.
PD is very diverse. There's a lot of women and minorities in high-ranking positions. So PD got it down. Fire, not so much, but I think we can overcome that. And one of the things that I would do is a mentoring program that youth can come in and ride with the firefighters, do an internship, get them ready for CSM or Fire Academy, and then pick from our own kids here in town, be the first pick. I think we can overcome that easily. If we open up a community center too, I want to have police and fire come and rep the basketball games and soccer games. We're going to have that interaction. So when the officer or firefighter walks down the street, they know John, they know Bob, they know Mary. They know them on a first-name basis because these kids they grew up with. That's the connection we're missing. But I think it's all easily overcome. We just need more involvement by fire, police, and all departments. And I think we can cover that goal. It's an easy goal to be accomplished. And having a community center and having a Boys and Girls Club up and running again, I think we're good to go.
Thank you. And next is Eddie Flores.
You know, I'm really extremely honored to be supported by our 120-plus AFSCME members. Our city local workers have fully endorsed me, AFSCME 829. And that is a diverse body, a diverse body that represents folks that have been born, that have been raised, and are working families here in South San Francisco. That's the community that I proudly represent, and I proudly want to continue championing. This endorsement means a lot because it's diversity of perspective, diversity of lived experience, and that's the representation that we need. We all know that representation matters, but I ask you, what is this council going to look like when there is no representation from the Latinx community or Spanish-speaking community in District 5? Are we going to wait 15 more years for another Latino to be represented in South San Francisco as we grow and perhaps go into 60%, 70% population? That is what we've got to address when we talk about representation. We cannot be what we cannot see. We cannot be there if there is no representation here on council.
Thank you. And next is Angelique Presidente.
Two of my children participated in programs from the police department, a police academy for children, and the fire department, a fire camp. I believe Park and Rec helped with the fire camp, and the police academy for the kids was by the police. They may or may not have helped with Park and Rec. But I think both of those programs helped bring kids, and it was like elementary, middle-school-ish age, from all around our city. That will help with the equity, right? Help everyone have the opportunity to check out PD and the fire department to be a part of the community, rather than just, you know, those who can afford it if they can afford the Park and Rec class or whatnot. Expand these programs so everybody can experience this. Everyone can help with our city. Again, that goes with like the funneling with our schools, right? We funnel our youth to help our community, help them find a career that'll help the equity when it comes to being promoted to these top jobs that are being talked about.
Thank you. And finally, Mark Adiego.
I wanted to point out, really, things change in the police department with Chief Jeff as a party. And one of the nice things about being able to draw talent from within the department is that the policies and the way of doing business really do continue with Scott Campbell. And so we have seen a great change in the face of the policemen that are out there in the community, and that's to be celebrated. It has been much slower in the fire department. Our chief is Hispanic, Jess Magallanes, is Hispanic, and we're expecting better. You know, we have the Equity and Social Justice Commission, and I'm hoping that they weigh in on those issues in all departments in South San Francisco. Very quickly, I just wanted to mention that Eddie Flores put together this $40 gift program where people could spend the money where they needed it most. And it was very eye-opening because it wasn't really restaurants, Eddie, that they spent it at. It was for food. 75% of the dollars went for food. That's a wake-up call for me.
Thank you. Wow, I have so many good questions, and we're going to go a little long already, but I'm going to ask just two more at this point, which is still going to take us a little long, but I just, we just have too many good questions. So the next one is about sustainable South San Francisco. Basically, it's climate change. What would you like to see implemented by staff, residents, and businesses to ensure we're making strides to protect South San Francisco and the earth? What would you like to see implemented by city staff, residents, and businesses to ensure we're making strides to protect South San Francisco and the earth? And first is Eddie Flores.
You know, this is a very important, again, issue in District 5. Climate change is a real thing. Sea level rise is a very real thing here in District 5. If you go out to our marina, anywhere across East of 101, we experience it. The high tides that are literally up to your kneecaps in water. We need to address this, and we have done this. And I'm really proud to be able to champion that we have created a very strong and powerful climate change, climate master plan that is included in our 40-year general plan. This addresses everything from understanding what we're going to do with city buildings and LED and how we're going to be able to move forward in the next 20 years sustainably, but also understanding reach codes. For those of you that don't know, it's really regulations that are going to put us moving forward and less dependent on gas and more reliable on electricity. As we move forward, we need to take all of those aspects moving forward. Sustainability is also important. Partnering with our clubs as well here in South San Francisco, high school, to teach the newer generation in terms of sustainability.
Thank you. Next is Mark Adiego.
So the environment is always something that has driven the way I conduct my life. When I was first elected in South San Francisco, there was no curbside recycling, nowhere in California. And I was aware that other nonprofits had put together recycling programs, and so I prevailed upon my colleagues, and South San Francisco became the first in the county to actually have a drop-off center for recyclables. Let's jet ahead. The San Francisco Bay is very important to us all. It's really, it's so iconic, and it's got a lot of pressure on it right now. We're learning that the effluent that we put in, all the phosphates and whatever, is what has killed fish recently. So I serve on the regional body called the San Francisco Bay Conservation and Development Commission, and they're dealing with the issues of the day as far as climate change and sea level rise. We recently put together a storm water capture program at Orange Park that removes the water from Coma Creek, cleans it, allows us to use it in the park, allows it to go back into the groundwater, and the clean water goes back into the bay. It's revolutionary.
Thank you. And next is Tom Carney.
What I think we should look at is we should do all-new building certificate of elevation. We should be building for the 100-year future. We shouldn't be building for now because some of the buildings at the Cove are going to be inundated with water. A water quality plant at high tide, it looks like it's going to be going underwater in a very short time, but we're pumping millions of dollars into it. So are we thinking prudently, or are we just doing what's doing right now? We've got to plan ahead. And then also, our electrical systems, as we've seen with the heat wave, we're told to turn off all electric appliances, don't charge your car. So we've got to plan for that to be in advance, not just playing catch-up. Recycle water. Millions of gallons we pump into the bay every day. I would like to see that pumped up to Coma, work out a deal there, and water the graveyards with recycled water rather than fresh water. Millions of gallons get used every day. So this would be a good way of using a product, recycling it, and then get it back. Then also, recycling center. We need to get more recycling bottles and cans and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Brittany Burgo.
I think climate change is a huge issue. However, District 5 has the disconnect of not being informed. How can we reach our residents? I think we need to communicate with them, have more learning workshops, how we can help, and to get their buy-in, and to also encourage new businesses that are coming into South San Francisco to possibly be electric, to think about the future and the long-term goal for our new generations to come. I think a way we can achieve this is to also connect with our schools, send out some hit pocket mail and say, "Hey, this is how you and your family can help," and I'm sure our kids will highly encourage our families to have that at home. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Angelique Presidente.
I think we need to expand and have more bay cleanups. I think that we have had some, but it's really not enough. When I was a part of the last bay cleanup, there was a lot of garbage out there, and that goes directly to the water, to our ocean life, to our wildlife. And I think that it's time that we all take the responsibility and make a difference for our communities. If we see garbage, help with that, you know? So many people just look the other way, and it's time that we take a stand and we do something ourselves and really just fight for our community. I think we need to expand the hours that we have recycling over at Scavengers. I think they end at like 1 o'clock, which really isn't convenient for a lot of people who actually want to recycle and they're at work. I think that climate change and trying to keep South San Francisco sustainable is very important. Just right now, look at all these lights that are on in here and how we can reduce the electricity usage, even by half. We don't need it this bright in here, right?
Thank you. The last question, what is your collaboration style, your team collaboration style? How do you handle differences of opinion? You know, how do you work on teams? And in particular, how do you work on teams when there are disagreements? And how do you collaborate and work through those? And first is Mark Adiego.
Well, I think you have to show respect for your colleagues. You know, we have a very diverse council, and people have some great backgrounds in fields and in areas that are beyond what I've experienced in my life. So when Eddie Flores speaks, I listen very closely because his life story is very compelling to me. And the things that he makes me aware of are things that I've not experienced. And I think that that's really what it's about. It's having respect for the individuals, not attacking them for any number of reasons, but really focusing on the good that these people bring to their jobs as South San Francisco councilmen. I've worked with a lot of individuals, and I'm actually looking forward. This is a very challenging group, but I'm looking forward to four years with them.
Thank you. Next is Brittany Burgo.
I think respect is extremely important, also open-mindedness, and the willing to advocate for what is best, not for my own thoughts. I am also a good listener. I can agree to disagree. I think compromising is important as well, and understanding people's issues and their own thoughts and where they come from is important. I think I am also trustworthy and can ultimately have a positive relationship, no matter the background. background of somebody else that might differ from me. And I have empathy and understanding towards others.
Thank you. And next is Angelique Presidente.
So, I have respect for my colleagues when I'm in a team collaboration. I work well with others. I have no problem speaking my mind, but I also am a good listener. I have respect for the residents, and that is my main focus on who I want to serve. So, while I am respectful of my colleagues and what their interests are, I think the interests of our people are more important. And I think that when I vote and when I collaborate, that's going to be what I am ultimately thinking about. And even though I can work well with others, when need be, I can make my voice heard and the voice of our people.
Thank you. Next is Eddie Flores.
Thank you. You know, I pride myself on being reasonable, being approachable, and someone that I can communicate and receive feedback. Feedback is a gift, and I am proud that a lot of people share that gift with me. Furthermore, I have the experience already in a collaborative effort by having served with four other very distinct Board of Trustees in the school board. We all have very different philosophies, perhaps, in our City Council, but like Councilmember Adiego said, we do it for the people. We don't do it about ourselves. We keep level-headed. We don't get into divisive rhetoric or the finger-pointing. We understand that it's about the issues. It's about moving forward and bringing us together to be that strong South City, that strong South City where we can all live, work, play, learn, and worship, and continue to move forward, bringing all of our community along. Trust and respect, and most important, humility whenever you understand that you're in a public role. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Tom Carney.
Well, I'm a lot of experience with that, working with people, working in fire prevention code enforcement for 30 years. You learn to work with people, listen to them, put yourself in their shoes, and have compassion, understand where they're coming from, understand the economic situation they might be in, what happened in their family that day, what happened that morning, what is going on in their life. And if you take time to digest that, understand it, you'll come up with a better solution. It's give and take, and ultimately, for District 5, Hispanic, Latino community are underserved. And as a representative of District 5, we're going to have to step up and advocate for them. They don't have a voice. We don't have a voice at all. Peter Gonzalez was the last mayor. That's why he's endorsing me, because he says you have a direct connection, you've lived so long, you've worked so long with the Hispanic and the downtown community and residents of District 5. You are the one that can communicate with them. And I feel that, again, understanding and good communication works.
Thank you. All right. Now, it's time for the closing statements, and while the candidates gather their thoughts for that, I will just let you know that you can find additional information about the candidates on the League's Voters Edge website, votersedge.org. All the candidates have been invited to enter their information and link to their own websites. So, it's time for closing statements, and we will reverse the order from the opening statements, and first is Brittany Burgo.
Well, thank you all, for those of you who are here today for listening and those of you who are at home. I am running for City Council because I believe that my track record has shown the investment I have put into giving back to my community for my community. I have lived in three out of the five districts for South San Francisco, but District 5 has been my home for a long time. I have the knowledge to know what the community needs because of my constant connection with families, that I have built their trust and know who I am at heart. I care about the future for all of us and what South San Francisco is going to look like in a year from now to five to 50 years. We have to maintain and build our culture and keep it alive in District 5, and that is what I intend to do if I am elected. For the small things that I have accomplished without any funding and the differences that I have made thus far, I can only imagine what I can do if I would be elected because there is so much more to do. If I would be elected, I would be the fifth woman in history to be a part of City Council. I humbly ask for your vote on November 8th. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't think I restated that they have two minutes for a closing statement, so I'm just making that clear. Next is Tom Carney.
I've lived in District 5 for 30 years, no break in service or living in District 5. I know what the community of District 5 needs. It's a very underserved community. I feel I'm going to be the voice on City Council. Every day when I walk down District 5, Airport Boulevard, Grand Avenue, Linden Avenue, the trash, the blight, it bothers me a lot, and I think that it's a disrespect to the residents of that area. I think it can be changed, and it can be changed now. I think it takes five people. I'm going to be a strong voice for District 5, but there's four other people I got to collaborate and work with. I've always had an open-door policy, and I intend, when I get elected, to have an open-door policy and once a month, meeting in District 5, and anybody in South San Francisco can come. I believe, as a whole, the city is doing well, except that what's happening East 101 is not reflected on anywhere in South San Francisco, and I think we got to take a closer look at that. I also would like to say too, that there is some changes. I want to clean up City Hall. And I mean that. The developers will not have an open door. They'll come in and be treated like everybody else. The coffee pot's going to be unplugged, and the cookies is going. We need developers, but the residents need to have a voice. No pop-up meetings. Everything is going to be open, transparent. Forget the rest. Vote for the best. Tom Carney.
Thank you. Thank you, audience. We'll thank them all at the end. Next is Angelique Presidente.
As a resident of South San Francisco and most directly District 1 for 43 years, having my AA in Business Administration and pursuing my BA in Business Administration, I bring to the table experience from being a resident, as well as experience in business. I believe that our current City Council has special interest in biotech, and that is a conflict of interest to our residents. You can tell by the developments that are popping up all over our city that the focus is on the expansion of these corporations, and when residents try to expand their own properties, they get put through hoops and loopholes and all these different things that take years before they can even do anything to their own property. But when a corporation, such as some of our biotech, would like to expand, it happens relatively quickly. That's a problem that needs to be addressed, and that should be something that shouldn't be happening. No one should be getting special attention unless it's our residents who live here, who work here, who own small businesses here. The focus needs to come back to our people. When you vote for Presidente, you're voting to end the corruption. You are voting for residents, small businesses, for our seniors, for our vets, and for our children. You are voting because your voice and our experiences matter. Vote Presidente for City Council, and thank you to those who have already voted. Thank you for everyone who has tuned in tonight. Thank you for everyone who is here tonight, and thank you for all of your questions.
Thank you. And next is Mark Adiego.
Thank you. You know, really, when you look at the town, there's no denying that we're incredibly successful, and a lot of that brings financial success to the city coffers. You know, and our success provides the city with some unique services that you won't find in other communities on the peninsula. We have a superior paramedic service, which is very expensive, but it's worth it because it shaves minutes off of what other communities experience on the peninsula. We have a mental health clinician that is funded part by the county, but I think mostly by the city of South San Francisco, that assists our police when they're dealing with mental health issues. Incredibly important. I'm seeing former Mayor Matamoto in the office, in the audience. We have a free transportation shuttle that you won't find in other communities. You know, as your District 1 representative, my years of experience are going to accrue to the benefit of District 1, but not just District 1, the entire city. I'm committed to the entire city. When we look at, you know, District 1, the established neighborhoods of Bury-Bury and Winston Manor and Sunshine Gardens are important, and all the new communities along El Camino Real, the Promenade, and all of the condo buildings that are there, all those residents need to be part of the dialogue, part of the representation at City Hall, and I am committed to that. You know, I've enjoyed, this is a different campaign because you get to meet the voters. You can't walk every door in South San Francisco, but you can virtually walk every door in the district. And I have had the time of my political career knocking on doors and interfacing with the people in Bury-Bury, Winston Manor, Sunshine Gardens, bumping into people that I haven't seen for a decade, bumping into people that I was in school with in fourth grade, in first grade. This is an incredible community, very cohesive, and I maintain that the original neighborhoods are still great places to live. I'm enjoying my life again on Heatherway, and my time's up.
Thank you. And finally, Eddie Flores.
Thank you to the League and our City Clerk's Office for coordinating and hosting this forum tonight. This year, we all have a very important choice to make. This election is a pivotal moment for our city. It's an election that will determine how we move forward as a community together, and it's a moment that requires thoughtful, collaborative, and experienced leadership amongst and all our neighborhoods and generations. To facilitate positive change in our city, it's important that we all work together. Despite the challenges of the last two years in this pandemic, our comunidad is resilient. Together, we can make housing more affordable. Together, we can expand childcare and after-school. Together, we can address climate change and address the issues that are affecting District 5 and that have underrepresented and lacked the voice for many years. Let's envision a District 5 with better public transit, and cleaner streets, a safer Linden corridor, a more beautiful farmer's market, a beautified peck slot, and new parks in Old Town. I will continue to work hard to bring the much-needed voice and representation to make sure that all residents, including immigrants like myself, excuse me, are represented in our city. My strength to be a connector and experience in these last two years on the job speak for themselves. I've led, I've collaborated, and I have delivered. This is who you want as your council member, a team player, a level-headed leader who understands the issues and is serious about the work, and not just about divisive rhetoric or finger-pointing. I have been doing the job for the last 21 months, and God has given me the grace and the capabilities to do it at a level that has brought results to all of my neighbors. I'm proud to share that I am endorsed by teachers, Democrats, and the only candidate fully endorsed by the Samhain Taylor Labor Council, our local city employees, ASME 829, and the Teamsters Labor Union, and 12 other labor unions. Why do I mention that? Because these unions are made up of local, South San Francisco, working families who were born and raised here, as well as by local affordable housing organizations. Please visit eddysssf.com to learn more, and I'd be honored to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys have been, thank you. We'll do it at the end. You guys have been so good. One last bit, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization, and membership is open to people of all genders, ages 16 and up. If you are interested in helping your community with forums such as this fun one and other activities that encourage civic education involvement, there are brochures at the back of the room with information about joining or supporting the League. A little bit about voting, ballots were mailed October 8th. October 24th is the last day to register and get a non-provisional ballot. Note that you can register to vote up until the day before the election, but you would have to submit a provisional ballot. You guys here in South San Francisco have two vote centers. One is open already at the Main Library, and it is open five days a week, Monday through Friday, until October 29th, and then it will be open seven days a week. And then you'll have a four-day vote center here in the municipal building at the Alice Peña Bulo Community Center. And vote centers are great if you marry your ballot or have any questions, or just like to vote in person, or whatever you like. You also have drop boxes at City Hall and Main Library. Remember to vote on or by November 8th, and encourage others to do so as well. And now, finally, it's a hard, brave, and sometimes thankless job to run for office, so I'd like you to join me in thanking all of them for running for South San Francisco City Council.